All right, I'm gonna get this meeting started. Just so you all know, this meeting is being recorded. Calling it this meeting, a joint meeting of DPW Subcommittee and Town Council, Tuesday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, in the Veterans Room. Roll call, Councilor Arcadia is here, Councilor Dow.
Yeah.
Mr. Splain?
Yeah.
And Mr. Lozo.
President.
Mr. Steve is absent. So, Consider and Approve DPW Town Council Meeting Minutes of November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Everybody got a chance to look at this?
Yes.
You see anything glittering on there?
No.
I didn't get too specific, but... I think I got captured, also. Everybody okay with it? All right. All those in favor of the second? Thank you. Agenda item number four, Citizens Forum. Anyone want to speak to something tonight? Anyone? Mr. Splain, please give us your address.
I just wanna give a shout out to the DPW guys and the guys from the water department with that storm we had. I know it was only four or five inches, but they're working with five new guys now applauding this town. I thought they did a hell of a job.
All right. Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
And Mr. Lozo?
I just wanna bring it up, I'm sure the town manager's aware of it, and I'm not gonna mention any names, but sidewalks in town are pretty bad, and some lady got hurt, and I think maybe we should look at the worst ones and try and do something, maybe something to, you know, they don't trip, because she got injured pretty good, and I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Shenyer?
Just wanna thank you for putting the packet on your webpage. It makes it very informational. I wish it was done with all subcommittees and council meetings, because it gives the public a good idea of what transpires and that stuff. A lot of other towns put that packet on there, but we don't, but it'd be nice if we did.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Town Manager?
The only thing I was gonna say, I'll have to follow up with Mr. Lozo's comment. Yes, I was told, the person came in, said they were filing the complaint with the information to the clerk's office, for some reason, that's where they file complaints, I guess, but I'll get the information. I heard that somebody was coming into town hall to make that.
All right, thank you, thank you very much.
Town hall sidewalks. Okay, if no one else. Agenda item number five, Review, Discuss the Town Manager's Appointment of Jason Benoit as DPW Director for a three-year term, effective immediately pending the successful completion of a pre-employment screening and state ethics. Entertained a motion to recommend... Motion by Splain, second by Lozo. Mr. Town Manager, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the committee, and those in the audience here this evening. I know, as many of you know, we've been looking for quite some time for a DPW candidate. I became aware of Mr. Benoit and his background only maybe six, eight weeks ago or so, and I actually approached him based on a couple people's recommendations, as him being a potential person that would be interested in the position. We had an informal conversation or two, and I did run into several area folks, including our interim, some contractors here in town, who said that they were aware of Mr. Benoit and his reputation. So, we had some further conversations, and I extended to him essentially an offer, and he is interested in coming here. He comes with approximately twenty-one years of municipal experience, working at several towns out west of us. He's currently the Highway Superintendent, in charge for all highway construction projects. I've called him several times, he's out on paving jobs, or on drainage jobs. I know we've been looking for somebody who can come in here, take control, have that road experience, and we've also talked about what we may do, whether or not we would, you know, at some point either get an assistant, an engineer, or maybe an engineering firm, but I think first and foremost, we need somebody who could be at the top, who has worked their way up the ranks, can run the job, know how to deal with roads, and we have a lot of those types of projects, so we met with him, the staff has, and we interviewed him first and the second interview, and again, you know, I verified references with people, so we feel that he is the best choice right now for the salvage.
All right.
He seems willing and interested to come here, so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Benoit, would you like to speak, or?
No, I wanna say thank you, Mike. I'm welcome of sorts through the interview process, and I'd like to perhaps put my best foot forward to the best of my ability.
All right. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to the committee for questions. Mr. Lozo?
I was just reading the gentleman's paperwork, and he's got some extensive qualifications here, and I would highly support him. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Splain? Almost up. Councilor Dow? All right, I would just like to say, I also looked over your resume, and you really are exactly what we're looking for, and I wanted to say, welcome aboard, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right? Okay, anybody from the audience have any questions?
Yeah, let's see someone.
Uh, Councilor Dow?
Appreciate the Town Manager, keep moving forward with this whole thing, and it's been difficult in the HR department as well, through the screening. All those who partook, including the subcommittee, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Okay, so, all those in favor? Approved, all go aboard.
Good luck.
You all, and that's what we brought forward Monday night.
Monday's the big hurdle.
There'll be no problem.
Second half this year. I know, I'm looking forward to where it offers.
You can, yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, morning on Monday.
See you on Monday. Okay, Agenda item number six, Review, Discuss the Town Manager's Appointment of Ray Collet Jr. as Seasonal DPW Winter Plow Driver, effective immediately through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, pending successful completion of pre-employment screening and state ethics. Hula, that was Lozo and Splain. The Town Manager stepped down, so if you wanna speak to this, Phil?
I don't know. Question? I mean...
Go ahead, go ahead, Phil.
I mean, Ray's plowed us last many, many years, and I'm looking forward to having him come, it would've been nice to have him yesterday, but it's okay, we'll wait till the next one.
Councilor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, you already have experience with that in the past?
Ray, yes, Ray.
What my question is, you know, sometime we'll bring him forward, agenda, and the person is not here, we don't have a chance to ask him questions, and when he go up to the Town Council, then everybody slam him, and then, you know, doesn't look good, so I hope if somebody come here in the future, try to let him get here first, take all the questions here before he got there.
Well, I just, I, I mean, I...
Yeah, this person is, you already know him, I don't know that before, the first time, actually, I see his name in my turn. Thank you.
You also? Mr. Lozo?
I grew up with this guy, he's very good. I've known him all my life. He worked for the State Police as a mechanic for many, many years. He's lived in town all his life, he's a hometown guy, and I highly support and recommend him. Thank you.
I think what Councilor Dow meant was that, you know, we don't get a chance to talk to him, and then he comes up there, everybody wants to beat up on the guy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't foresee him even going to the council, and he just wants to do his temporary plowing. That's the same deal with the next guy, too, I mean, I've known him for a while, but he just wants to be, they're seventy years old, they wanna do something, citizen around.
Mr. Shenyer?
I just want a question, not to the candidate so much, but in Ray's case, he's been an employee of the town for multiple, multiple years. I don't understand why they gotta go through this process all the time, if they're already been vented through the, you know, through the process over the years. I mean, somebody like Ray should just be an automatic, here's the list, and, you know, maybe require a driver's record, say, for instance, but to go through the application process, in this case here, because of the delay that's been taking place, couldn't use him at this last thought. So, I just, I just don't understand why that has to happen.
Well, probably should've been brought forward sooner than ten. We've been, there's a lot of issues that have gone that we have not been brought forward, like this winter parking ban, we didn't see that in November, should've been brought forward, and I know you're short staff, that's why.
I mean, it's just, it's playing catch-up on a lot of things, too.
But is there a way that, you know, somebody like Ray doesn't need to do this every year? A new, a new person, yeah, I would say, yes, but somebody that's been here for many years, I just don't understand why it should have to.
I agree.
Mr. Lozo?
I agree with Mr. Shenyer. This guy has been working for the town for many, many years, and I know what they put him through, extensive paperwork, which I thought was kinda crazy, but someone like that, I wouldn't put him through all that, and just hire him, because let him come to this, let him go through the committee, and we'll just hire him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilor Dow?
I think it's a good idea to keep bringing him forward, not because of him, the subject, for everybody part-time, only come seasonal, it's not a full-time. If it's full-time, or certain thing, you know, yeah, but I think seasonal, you know, I think is always, not regardless of him, because if you're gonna waive him, you're gonna waive everybody, and you don't know what's going on. I think it's a good idea to keep bringing everybody on board when it's seasonal, I don't think we should just, you know, we should go through us.
I mean, I agree with what he says a little bit, but maybe instead of, maybe make it a three-year appointment, or something like that, so this way, it just, I just think going every single year for the same person, I don't know, maybe HR hasn't been sure of something with this.
For that, every, if I continue?
Councilor Dow?
Everybody...
I don't know.
Because everybody is a...
Hold on, one at a time, he's got the phone.
Everybody got through that, either if you're a call firefighter, you know, they point you three years or whatever, you're gonna come back again for renewal, so it's a seasonal, have to come back for renewal, I believe so. I don't think it should be automatic renewal, you know?
But call firefighter doesn't have to go through the application process like this all the time.
Yeah, but still have to be approved.
I don't have a problem with you, but this way you can still utilize them.
All right. Okay, all those in favor? Agenda item number seven, Review, Discuss the Town Manager's Appointment of Ray DeDaly as Seasonal DPW Winter Plow Driver, effective immediately through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, pending successful completion of pre-employment screening and state ethics.
Motion. Shenyer?
I said, he's another gentleman that just retired months something to do, instead of sitting around, and he has previous plowing experience, and just to kinda go off on things, this is all new to us at the DPW, having to bring people here, too, so that's kinda one of the reasons we're a little late on a lot of things, too.
Never late, as well you bring him in. You're never late, as well you bring him in.
I know.
All right, anybody have any other questions? No? Mr. Splain?
Are you worried about his travel and this thing?
No, 'cause, I mean, he can get here within pretty quick time, and I'd be giving, we always call an hour ahead anyways, to anybody, I don't know, hey, you got, we're gonna start plowing at one AM, we call him at midnight.
You all set? All right. Nothing else? All those in favor? Thank you. Agenda item number eight, Review, Discuss the Updated Winter Parking Ban Roots for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, entertain a motion, recommend to council for approval. Okay. Go ahead.
I mean, the only thing I have on this is, like I said, I wasn't too aware that it had to come through subcommittee all the time on this one, because, I mean, the signs are already out there telling you November first to...
Well, since I have it on the council, it's always come before this committee every year.
I'll make sure, make a note of that, I just did not know, so that's why we didn't bring it forward prior.
Mr. Splain?
I have a question, and I thought this was the agenda item to bring it up, I'm not sure. It was posted on social media yesterday, last week, again today, in regards to alternate side parking, snow emergency, winter ban, whatever you wanna call it, in regards to Maple Street. That's been a problem for years, so my question is, the town parking lot that is beside the Honor Roll Monument, is it safe to say that they, the residents of Maple Street can park in that parking lot during winter parking ban, snow emergency?
Which parking lot is that again?
The one on the Honor Roll Monument, there's that little parking lot, like ten cars, eight cars?
Oh, yeah.
Can they park in there?
Oh, yeah.
Because...
I mean, we plowed it anyway, so...
From what I've been hearing, though, is people from Maple Street have been parking in there, and they're getting tickets. I, you missed the, you missed the first half.
Okay, good to go.
Okay, go ahead.
I will say this, before the ban period started, they were parking over there. I don't know who they were, but they're, the same cars were just parked there all day long. That's what I saw.
It was, you missed the first part, but I said, it was on social media, it was on social media today, that the residents were parking there from Maple Street, and there was tickets issued, so I'm just trying to clear the air. I said I would, I would question it tonight, so I didn't know if they can, can't, so I guess that's what I was looking at.
And my, Mr. Chairman, my comment was, on board.
Okay, no, that's all right. I don't know what's going on there either, it's the first time I've heard of that, and something...
I figured I'd bring it up and just see, 'cause it is a town parking lot, so I didn't know if they're allowed to park there or not, so I just said I would check into it.
Mr. Lozo?
Well, Center Hope is at the end of that street, and maybe some of their employees or someone that goes over there, maybe they walked out of the street, I don't know, there's not a lot of parking in there, so that's just something, maybe I'm thinking that's what's happening there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Probably something we'll have to talk to the chief about, I think, I would think.
I just figured, I said I'd bring it up.
I can speak with the chief tomorrow, and let him know what we're planning on doing.
Because that road is bad, like you know.
We've had discussions about taking out the sidewalk down there, and extending the roads, that way they can only park one side, you'll have more space. I mean, even during the regular weekday, even when there is alternate, or not alternate, I mean, the...
It's tough.
If you saw, they can't even get down there to get the trash, so...
All right. Thank you. So, and the other thing that we do is, once this is approved at the Town Council, then this goes up, and then they start ticketing, right now they're just doing courtesy tickets, so that's why. Mr. Shenyer?
I don't believe in giving just courtesy tickets.
Well, that's what the chief said.
Right, individually, that ticket is my nephew.
Well, then he should say something, because the chief told me it's just courtesy.
In the parking lot? Oh, the parking lot, because of the, he works at Heidt's, and he was off there in parking, he watched the work, he parked there prior to the storm coming, he gets out of work at eleven o'clock at night, and he left it there the next morning, which was yesterday morning, that was, it was run, and the alternate, we got a ticket, and I don't know what kind of ticket it was, but he's been parking in there for years, he's lived out on Main Street for three years, he didn't wanna get involved with it, because, and he did call me, but there is an issue over there, and we tell people to go to municipal parking lots, park, get off the streets, and Mr. Shenyer was getting a ticket, and technically, it isn't municipal parking lot, it's for the monument, and if you give him, there you go, there's nobody there, nobody parks there, so I know he's going through the process of appealing the ticket.
And this is the one off Maple Street?
Yes, this is the car on Maple Main.
Okay. Well, Phil, so you're gonna look into this?
Yes.
Like Phil says, during the winter months, is the only time, so we can get down there, if it's one side of parking.
It's still...
All right. Nothing else? All those in favor? Thank you. Agenda item number nine, Discussion, Allow All Rate for Seasonal DPW Winter Plow Drivers and Take Any Action Thereof. I did receive an email from Ms. Lavanna. I don't know if you want me to read it, she also sent me this, I don't know if you received this, this is the study that she did. Mr. Lavanna, do you want me to read your email, or do you just wanna speak, please?
I can speak. Would you like me to come forward or am I coming out of here?
Yep, go ahead.
So, we conducted a survey of nineteen different municipalities throughout the Commonwealth, most of them are neighboring towns, we wanted to keep it within, like, you know, a reasonable radius, and our findings through the study is that we're grossly under other communities, we're underpaying our snowplow drivers. Just so you know, every single community that I spoke to is struggling for snowplow drivers, even at the current rate that they, that they, that they're paying. It seems like it's a current theme throughout the Commonwealth, everyone is struggling, so given that information, they themselves were conducting salary surveys, and they were thinking of increasing their current rates. But based on the information that we gathered, we feel that we should increase our hourly rate to twenty-five dollars an hour, and perhaps maybe considering paying overtime after eight, 'cause some communities are also doing that. The reason why they're doing that is, again, it's, you know, you're dangling the carrot, you wanna, you wanna make sure, you wanna entice people to come in, incentivize people to come in and apply for the positions, because there's no guarantee that we're gonna have several storms in a week that they're gonna get over forty, so you're more likely to, you know, work through a storm and work ten or eleven hours, or even more, sixteen hours, so I would recommend that. I don't know if that's gonna, you know, help us with recruiting, but it's certainly not gonna hurt us, 'cause right now, as you saw, we only have two people on the agenda item that applied for our snowplowing positions.
Okay. Mr. Lozo?
I couldn't agree with you more. This guy, I mean, that's why we only have two people coming forward, nobody wants to get paid that, what we're paying, and I look at the other towns, and, you know, they're higher, a lot higher than us, so I would say if we were to pay the twenty-five that you recommend, I think we would get more people to come in, but right now we're short, we only have two guys, and, you know, if we get a big storm, they're out all night, you know, I mean, you wanna go work for fifteen dollars or ten bucks an hour all night? No. It's not, doesn't entice anybody to come into it, so I would agree with, on the increase. Thank you.
Mr. Splain?
First, thank you for doing this for me, I brought this up at our last meeting. I agree with everything you said as far as the increase to that twenty-five, the overtime after eight. The only, if we were to do this, is this something that can go in effect come Monday night, or is there like some bylaw you have to do, or is this... Because it's a seasonal employee, I'm not sure how it's set up.
It has to go to council. Because it's a rate change, yeah.
That's what I mean, so it's a rate change, it only has to go in front of council, it's not like a bylaw's gotta get adjusted, or... Because I support this a hundred percent, but I was just curious if it was, you know, something that can go in effect immediately, or we'd have to wait till next fiscal year, a year or two.
No, we just have to go in front of council on Monday and get council's approval.
Thank you. You also? Councilor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to you. What was the rate before?
Eighteen, ten.
Eighteen? Did that twenty-five included anything, or just flat rate?
It's just a flat rate.
Include any, you know, those extra stuff?
No, it's just a flat rate, but, you know, I would recommend that we also pay overtime after eight, so, and that's a huge incentive.
You also?
Either if they work less than, they're just seasonal, correct, like part-time, either if they work less than four hours, anytime over, after eight o'clock, you wanna give them overtime.
All right, after eight hours.
After eight hours.
Thank you.
Mr. Shenyer?
So, you have an upcoming storm possibility of this weekend, are your two hired drivers gonna be able to plow this weekend if there's the storm that comes in? And the second part of that question would be, if you're gonna increase the rate change, you may wanna put some kind of amendment into your rate change, that they get prorated, the rate, once it's loaded on, just make the effectiveness as of today or so.
Okay.
I agree.
Good idea. Mr. Harding, did you wanna speak on that?
Actually, I was gonna ask the same question about the plow driver thing. I'm all for it, if we can, if this will help us get some additional drivers, it'd be great.
All right. Mr. Shenyer?
You have to change the schedule, you know that schedule, you do every once in a while to change the thing?
Yes, so right now on the schedule, it's eighteen, ten, we would just change it to twenty-five, and then, you know, that's what would go up to council for voting, right?
All right, go ahead, Councilor.
Sorry. So, when they're working, they're using the town truck, correct?
Yes, it's a bike vehicle.
And if they got, if they got hurt, the town is responsible for them?
Just like a normal employee, worker's comp, right, yeah.
Thank you.
So, how do we want to amend this, here? Do we want to add retroactive to today's date?
Twelve fourteen.
And do we want to add, include overtime after eight hours?
Right.
Yes.
Wanna make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right, so it's retro to today's date?
Retro, yes.
And overtime after eight hours. All right, that's the amendment, plus OT after eight hours. All those in favor of the amendment? Councilor Dow? Did somebody make a motion on the whole agenda? I must've missed that, I think I missed that? All right, somebody wanna make a motion on the amended?
I'll make the motion, yeah.
Tagging. Steve and Splain. Okay.
Yeah, but actually, there wasn't even a, it was just a discussion.
It is now.
Okay, all right.
So, the motion is to, the agenda is to pay the hourly rate for seasonal DPW winter plow drivers as recommended by HR, retroactive to today's date, and overtime after eight hours. Do you have that, Mr. Chairman? I'll write it, and then I'll send it at the board one. All right, all those in favor? In favor? Nope, none in favor?
I don't mind the twenty-five, but I don't like the after eight.
I'll see, I have the chair and the vice chair behind me. Maybe what we could consider, because of the shortage, if we're having a storm on Friday, that conditionally, in light of the shortage, and it tends to be, you know, a matter of public safety, that we would allow these two people to assist conditionally, file approval on Monday night, to go forward to future storms, and that's just my suggestion, and maybe I can put that in an email to you, and you could let me know, that we could temporarily allow these two people to do this weekend's storm conditionally, and then, pending the final approval on Monday night, do all future storms.
If HR would agree with that recommendation.
So, that's to Mr. Shenyer's point. Councilor Al, I'm sorry.
So, there's no problems with insurance, though, even though we have the vote, listen?
No. Because we've hired people in the past without voting, so we've never had a liability with the insurance.
All right. Okay, is that the end of this discussion? I think we already voted on itself. I'm going to add an agenda item, Agenda Item Nine B, suspend the rules, Agenda Item Nine B, Review, Discuss the Proposal from Guaranteed Building Maintenance to Repair, Replace Slates on the Town Hall Roof for a Total of Nine Thousand Seven Hundred Dollars, entertain a motion to recommend that...
I'll make the motion.
Approve the Contract for Guaranteed Building Maintenance to be Funded from Capital Project Town Hall Roof Repairs, Count Number Six Three Ninety-Eight, and approve the Town Manager's signed all related documents. Lozo, Splain? I did print out a copy of my motion, and I printed out the email, I think you received the email as well. So, a motion by, Lozo, second by Splain. Is this, this is from your office, right?
Yes.
Town Manager, so go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, as many of you know, I have recent Town Council Meetings, the condition of the roof, especially over near Councilor Dow's seat...
Uh, the condition of the roof, especially over near Counselor Dow's seat, has come up during the rain. And it turns out, this was something that was before my time and some of your time, I guess it was discussed in the past to get this fixed. For whatever reason, it wasn't addressed. Um, after it was discussed about two weeks ago, I started making inquiries, um, with the assistance of Mr. Jackson, our interim, to find some slate repair people. We had some names. We reached out to some of them. They said they would come down. Uh, of the people that we solicited quotes from, the only person that really came down and gave it a look was Dan Truax and his crew. Uh, they did an initial look and then they came back for a more detailed look to give us the quote. Um, first, they came down just to see if it was something they were undertaking. They said yes. So, they got up with bigger ladders and took a look around. He'd indicated to me, uh, in the email, but also on the phone, that the, uh, I guess their ice breaks or snow breaks, the metal plates that, that they put and stagger along the roof to prevent the sheets of ice sliding down, uh, is where the damage occurred. And he said there's several pieces of slate that got damaged. I guess they can see right into the, the underlayment that they put underneath. There's chunks missing. So, he said that those all had to be replaced, but that he would need an articulating lift, or scissor lift to get up there. Uh, and he estimated the work to be at ninety-seven hundred dollars. And I had asked Chairman Marquetti if we could have this put on, uh, for time, in the essence, people wanna get it buttoned up before it snows or rains any further. So, I'd asked if we could get it on so we could, tonight, so that we could get it on to the council for next week. And as he alluded, because this came up in the past, there was money already set aside to fix this roof.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lozo?
I just wanna say this, uh, the Truax and the guaranteed builders is pretty much well-known around here. They're only a disturbance. And, um, I've never heard anything bad about their work and I would support this definitely.
Okay. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Better hurry up and get your holiday shower before they fix it.
Get a towel.
All right. Um, okay. All those in favor? Uh, motion passes. I will get, get you a copy of this amended motion. Thank you. Uh, agenda item number ten, discussion of road improvement projects throughout town. Um, turn this over to Mr. Spine.
I just wanna say a few things. One, the council voted back in, I believe, October to not have Lynch pave Main Street because it was too cold. Even though every street came out nice and all those side roads came out nice, I still don't agree paving at twenty-two degree weather, thirty-degree weather, thirty-five degree weather. Hopefully, it stays. Hopefully, we have some sort of guarantee or warranty on that. It does look nice. The other thing I wanna question is, in our uh, open road regulations, it says that we're not to open the road after November fifteenth. But I was just, unless it's an emergency. I was just question, I'm just questioning how the job on Elm Street was able to get done on December third or fourth. It was a two-day project. From what I'm told, the first day that he did it, there was no details there and the construction company shut the road down themselves. And I know the contractor that did the work, we had a problem with them in the past when they didn't work on Main Street. I'm just curious how that, how that's happened.
Uh, Mr. Harding, would you like to speak to this or Mr. Town Manager?
All in one?
Yep.
Well, I'll, I'll just say that, um, Mr. Shiner, the elder Mr. Shiner, I know, uh, did contact me the other day with some of these questions. I did meet with Mr. Jackson that afternoon and he told me that, um, the West Street project would be shutting down, I think, this week. Um, and as, as far as he knew, he had gone out, he also went out to the paving site. He said he was checking the temperatures. And he said, as far as he knew, the only things that NUCO should be working on were supposed to be leaks and items of necessity, not service lines. And that's what he told, but that's what he represented to me.
That's not what I'm talking about.
Okay, well, I, I don't, then I'm not that familiar with the Elm Street one. But that was, I, I did have a question about why there was still road openings happening at this time of year. And that's what was relayed to me when I made the inquiry.
I'm, I'm talking about.
All in one?
Yes.
That was for the sprinkler system down there, right? On Elm Street, yeah. And Mr. Jackson's the same thing with me. He allowed it to be done because we're still having nicer weather. Um, um.
I don't agree with that because there's others in this town we said no to, and I mean.
Everybody that's come through for an open permit was allowed to do everything until?
Past years.
Yeah. I'm just saying, just spray it right now. I mean, that could be something I can take up and.
Okay. The other thing, Phil, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, did we, or the council, okay? I thought we were, the town was purchasing a bog cap for sidewalks or a sidewalk machine. What's the status? Is that backordered? Is that?
Yeah, it's, we were gonna be getting one that only had twenty hours. And it was just a demo, you know, everything like that. And then it was promised to somebody else and now they're getting us a brand new one at the same price. So, we're just waiting on it to come out.
So, are we renting?
Yes, for the time being, yes.
Is it possible to get a copy of that rental agreement on that? Cause I brought this up in the past and the answer that I got, and I'm gonna say it was a bullshit answer. And I'd like to see that agreement because, I mean, if it breaks down, who's liable, who's liable for it?
If you're renting, if you're renting, it's the company you're renting from, it's the council, but.
That's where I was getting the answer. I was, is, do we have enough rental agreement?
I have no clue, but I will look into that tomorrow.
The last thing I wanna discuss is, uh, is there somehow we can reach out to, and I'm just gonna use NUCO cause that's the major one, and reach out to them and try to get some sort of schedule, some sort of time definite as far as when they're gonna start repaving roads that are now gonna be passed there in ninety-day settlement period, like, uh, classic country club plays. I forget the other roads down that way. I mean, I, I just, if they pass there, by the time spring comes around, their ninety days is up. I think come springtime, they should start paving and not wait till the end of the summer. Is there somehow we can reach out to somebody? Do you have a contact and try to get a, a time definite or a timeframe?
I have a gentleman's contact I can reach out to.
And then, I'd like to see if we can also do that with, um, Ludlow as far as South Street goes.
South Street's supposed to happen, it's right in spring. It's supposed to be milled and over late.
So, are they gonna hold off working on West Street? Uh, do we know how that's gonna?
No, they have two different, they have two different, um,
Cruze.
Cruze, yeah, thank you.
I'd just like to try to like nail it down so we don't go.
I can try to get a date.
To the middle of summer, end of the summer with South Street.
It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be first, first time in spring once, you know, winter's completely over and all that, so. I mean, I can see if I can get an actual date, but the party is gonna tell me, we have to see how winter pans out first, but, but I'll try to get a date.
And then, Phil, thank you for that sidewalk on Key Street.
You're welcome.
You also? Mr. Lozo, did you have something?
No, I'm also, I haven't gets the question answered. Thank you.
You have any? Mr. Shiner?
As the comment said, I, I did send out, ask questions and concerns. And then the other day, I sent them an email, uh, with, uh, some of the other concerns. And, and I'll take these, I'll take Everett Street, for instance. When they did the paving the first day, I don't believe there was anybody at from the town there until we notified Town Manager's office.
And then, I, and.
Mr. Jackson and I were at a, at a different meeting at the time when, when that did happen and.
Right, so, I was concerned of, of the paving that, that was being done. And I, I position, appears to have done a good job. Uh, they did, I believe, uh, work for Mr. Piraki.
They did Moon and.
Moon and Coon Street. I, I mean, it appears that it's done a good job. The things that concerned me, if you look on the town's permit, and maybe I'm reading it wrong, and Heather even said it. When you do laterals, that go from the main trench to the homes, the tie-ins and those kinda things, fifty feet and less is, I believe, supposed to be a curb-to-curb pavement. And also, the, uh, and it's, and it's laterals, even older laterals that were there to the new laterals, if I read the bylaw correctly, that is supposed to be curb-to-curb. So, they're taking into consideration the new laterals and plus the old laterals that could be there. Could be water or sewer. It doesn't specify. It says older, even older trenching. Now, I brought that up many a times. And that hasn't taken place in town with NUCO. That laterals, they patched the laterals. And, uh, if you look, I, I watched some of those, uh, trenching being done. Not whacked. There was two done on Cedar Street that was whacked with a backhoe, pounded and it paved over. And I don't even think you guys knew that was taking place, uh, on Cedar Street. They did two, a gash rip here. And then they paved it and, uh, it came back a couple days later, the paving came and, and I, and I watched it. It was like, it's in my neighborhood. Uh, and that's the problem that's happening. And, and that's with oversight. And I know we've been hounding and, and, and the manager has come back and forth with ideas or what their plan is. But here we are now, that council back into life funded that position. And it got messed up somewhere along the line and read differently, but, you know, you've got construction, it's usually gonna come back again, probably in March. And I would hope that council starts looking at that position. Uh, but this stuff is still going on. Uh, I don't know what Mr. Jackson said about the laterals. Uh, it's in the permit. NUCO don't come in here and they don't get a drain layers permit. They just come in and do what they wanna do. And, and then I asked, and, and did anybody look at NUCO's contract that they have with National Grid? Did the town sit down with National Grid to look at the contract to see if there is a conflict between the contract, maybe our bylaw? And I don't believe that has ever taken place. And, and that's the problem. It just, if people come into town here, sometimes the cops know you don't that a trench is happening. So, I mean, it's, it's a continuing problem that it, it appears that it's not being either taken care of. It's not being done. Or town hall rite just don't care. And then eventually, down the road, a few years, we're stuck with a bad road. We're stuck with a, I'll use, for instance, Dresser Street. They've talked about that thing for over a year and we bypassed the three years that haven't come back. Oh, I, we didn't know. Heather said we had almost three hundred open permits, I think, that, that has not been looked at. Has not been, uh,
Inspected.
inspected by the town. Of, of, and, and the three years were coming up on a lot of these trenches. And, and they're gonna, they're gonna go to the wayside. You go on Whister Street, you did a nice job paving down the road, the laterals, some of the laterals are in the same situation. I, I just don't understand why it's not being done. If, if I'm reading the bylaw wrong, tell me, but nobody's told me that at any of these meetings. Nobody has said that. Uh, even in the conversations that I've had with the manager, I, I don't know if Mr. Jackson said that that should be that way. They don't read the bylaw. That's the problem. Now, in other, other, other towns, other states, when you come get that permit for drain layers license, the people on the job, the foreman on the job has that bylaw with them. And rules and regulations on how the trenches are supposed to be done and fixed. So, when there's somebody from the town oversight says, hey, do you got that bylaw with them? Well, here it is. In our town, we don't do it. Maybe the same paper, I don't know. But it, it's time that we take our roads serious and, and do what's correct by our town bylaw. I mean, if we force it on the little guy, but we don't force it on the big guy like NUCO. And NUCO is working for Boston Gas or New England Grid, the ever so.
National Grid.
National Grid. That's who they work for. That's who they're gonna listen to. They're not gonna listen to the town. They don't listen to what Bos, the New, National Grid says. They have the contract with National Grid. And National Grid tells them how they're going to do the work. I mean, the end of the day, I've watched them purposely. They don't whack it, they fill it. November fifteenth to April first. All the trenches that are opened up have to be flowable fill. Am I correct? Cause then that say that in the bylaw. It's not being done. I'm not, yes, you can.
On gas lines you get them?
Yes, you can. They get different.
They told me one time like, cause the.
Cause they didn't wanna put it in. They.
I'll answer that question for you.
They have it. I mean, our bylaw says to use it. And then our bylaw also says that all on the main drags, and they, they name it. Eastwood Road, I mean Everett Street, Elm Street, Main Street, South Street, West Street. All coming into town, all says that they're gonna use that flowable year-round. Now, I understand you don't need to use it all the time, but it's in our bylaw. And it's, none, none of our bylaws being followed by the major construction people in town. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lozo?
When a contractor goes to get his license in the town, you get all the paperwork.
Yep.
And they're supposed to read it.
Yep.
Okay, they gotta know what to do.
Yep.
Even from the out-of-town or wherever in the town.
Yep.
When you dig a trench, a, a lateral, when you patch it, you're supposed to cut back the asphalt. A foot, I don't know, I forget what it is. A foot maybe?
I believe it's.
And then you pave it so that you don't get the seam cracking in the trench. Recently, on Cheltenham Street, Kevin and I have a call as citizen members here. On a weekend, the contractor dug the hole and just backfilled it with bony gravel. I get a call from somebody on a motorcycle. I almost got killed down there, cause the rocks are all over the road. I personally went down there with a broom, took the guy's cones that were on the side of the road. I don't know the guy's names. There's no, no name on the machine. It must've been a rented one. I pushed all the rocks and I put the cones across the road to block it. I called the police department. I called them to keep an eye on it. DPW, after twelve o'clock, I didn't know, I tuned the call because they closed. Nobody was there. And apparently, this guy told the contractor, I'm getting the second hand, that it was okay to leave it like it was, which I don't believe happened. But that was dangerous that, that time. And this contractor is from out of town. They, they get away with murder. Thank you. I just wanted to say that.
Okay, now I'm gonna go to Mr. Spine first and then I'll come back to you.
First, I agree with everything George is saying. I've been talking about that for fifteen months now. I get a better answer out of the wall. My next thing to you to, I'm gonna address it to the town manager, is there's a new problem that arose on Main Street with over twelve water cocks, water boxes? Is that something that is gonna be covered under the contractor who did the work or is that news to you or?
Well, I'm wondering what you mean, the, um, the water cutoffs?
Yeah. Water boxes, water shut offs.
I don't know. There's something that's been mentioned to me, but I'm not sure if it's the same thing, so I don't know if, um, we're speaking the same language, but, um.
So, if we have to shut off water to a building, say, you can't shut it off because? Is that something that's gonna be covered under the contract when we install all those new ones?
Around them? Are they sinking?
No, I mean, I.
They're on an angle. They can't get the bar to shut them off.
I know, I know.
Fifteen of them, I can't shut them off.
I'm gonna let Mr. Lozo.
The old bank on the side of South, the, uh, old South of Santa, Santander Bank, it got bought by that bank. So, they went to shut the water off. They winterized the building for the winter. They couldn't shut the water off because the, it's crooked. So, they went down the street and they checked more, a lot more. And like he said, it's about fifteen, twelve to fifteen of them that you can't shut the water off now because of the contractor that did Main Street. When they backfilled and they, the cast iron is like crooked and you can't get on the valve. This is all over Main Street.
So, we're over that one-year grace period of warranty now and this just came up. And, I mean, you're fifteen of them, you're digging them up.
Something to talk to lunch about.
Right, well, so first of all, I don't know that that was explained to me in that way, so in essence, it is new to me. Lot of times, you can say it's discovery when you discover it. So, if those were there and nobody had any need to go adjust them, and this is the first time people went out for the wintertime, I would, I would argue to the contractor that look, but for the fact that the winter is coming, to shut off the water, we would not have known that. So, I would argue that we shouldn't be outside of any grace period. Was the contract, this was the paving or the person who installed the, the, the water extensions?
Who, who, we did the water lines on Main Street and. Who, who redid the water lines on Main Street and the shut offs?
They're all brand new.
They're brand new. I would talk to Steve Gregoire, he probably knows all about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I was under the impression we put a whole new water line down Main Street and all new shut offs to the buildings.
We did, probably last spring, because that's where we used some of the first ARPA money was, when they had the project open to extend the larger service lines to those buildings at the time. So I, I can't recall who did the drain work there, then the water lines at that time, but so I'll have to work on that with Phil and Steve Gregoire.
Thank you.
You also, I want to let...
I'm all set, thank you.
Mr. Shayer talk, he's been very patient.
Just a couple points of clarification on, on some of the stuff that was said, just so you're aware. I know you spoke about there was 251 open road permits that weren't inspected. If those road permits were signed off on, even though they were inspected, Town Stopper's probably on all those roads. On the curb cock deals or valve covers or whatever you like to call them, water boxes, gentleman that I'm working for on the side right now helping out, good buddy of mine, owns an excavation business, we just did a water service and it was in Charlton, but Stopper's Water owns the particular main that runs through Charlton, so they oversee and manage that system. They had to send a gentleman out to inspect that valve box after we were done backfilling it and specifically put the wrench on it to make sure that we could, or they could access it. So either that wasn't done or they were hit during paving when they did the grindings. So you'd be able to tell if they were hit with, with the grinder by looking at them. Usually they don't run directly over them, so it's probably not the pavers. So you might want to talk to Steve like, like Mr. Lozal said, to see if they sent somebody out there to inspect those, because that should be the water department that's going out there inspecting those valves, not your DPW.
You're right.
Anybody specifically, specifically for those that has to come from the water department because they own them. And the paving, I forget exactly, what were you saying about paving?
The laterals.
Between the laterals. Oh, laterals. And again, that goes back to, NUCO doesn't do the final paving, just like my company didn't do final paving. We would do what they call temporary paving, and I spoke about this months ago. The paving is usually owned by the utility owner, in this case, National Grid. And the contract that they have would be outsourced to another company, whoever it may be that they use to do their final paving. So whatever the contract is between you and National Grid would dictate what that company is going to pave. And if that contract is in any way, shape or form different than what your bylaws state and it's not agreed upon, then you're, you're going to pave what that contract is, hence the reason I recommended, then you get that contract and figure out what, if there was any paving literature inside of that contract regarding curb-to-curb or maybe it was just a curb to yellow stripe due to the fact on where they lay the main, you've got to remember nine times out of 10, line assignment on your main, they would try to run where majority of your services are on one side of the road and usually that's where you see main crossings. And of course, it also depends on other utilities in the ground, but you have to look at their contract, otherwise you're marking up, you know, we're beating a dead horse at the end of the day. So without any of those answers, you're going to, you're going to talk about this till next year if you don't get any of that stuff and take a look into it and actually figure out what that paving contract states. And your contact person would be National Grid, not NUCO, because they're going to tell you, go see National Grid, because they will do the final paving. And it's going to be up to, you know, your DPW, now new director and Phil, I'm sure will be involved in this now that he's been in this position, he was thrown into for the past six months. You're going to have to have those negotiations. And I can only hope 251 open road permits weren't completely signed off as completed because you took ownership of it after they were signed off.
All right. Okay, is there anything new on this agenda?
Just one, one question I have. Maybe I'm taking it the wrong way, but I'm surprised that the manager hasn't been made aware of, I, I heard the shock from the water almost two weeks ago. And I'm taking it that you're not fully aware of the extent of the problem.
So, if I may, if you was checking, like any other problem, if it doesn't get reported, I wouldn't know. So if, if a private entity had a problem with it unless they called, probably no, they could have called the ones calling, I don't know, you know, Phil didn't...
I heard, I heard about it through Mr. Gregoire and I was on the assumption that he was controlling it, but if he didn't tonight, it can't go any further than that.
It's not on you, I mean...
No, but I just don't, I can only act on what I know.
Right, and that's why I just find it strange, here we are, a week and a half, this manager's going to have to sit down in all probability with Lynch or, or our overseer for that particular project and ask, how come? And how serious is it? Because you just, you've got water cots for the main water going into the buildings and I believe you also got water cots for the sprinkler line that is a separate, if I, if I understood the construction, so.
Yeah.
So if you got, if you got 30, 35 cots out there for the shut offs and half of them are not working or you can't access them, something needs to be done before we do final paving again, otherwise we're going to be in the same situation, digging up Main Street.
Okay. That sounds like a good advice.
That's all, I think the manager's aware of it now.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Can I?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Counselor.
Not on any of them, except on Agenda Number 9. I don't know if we can go back, ask Western now.
Oh, well, go ahead.
We, we say the overtime will start at 8:00.
After 8 hours of work.
Oh, 8 hour, not 8?
Yeah, after 8 hours of work.
Okay, I understood wrong. But I'm like, it started after 8. That's what it was, say after 8. It didn't say hour or time, I'm just going to end.
At least it knows after 8, don't worry about it.
All right. Accept the motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Automatic OT, I'm in.
All those in favor? This meeting is adjourned.